If we all stand up, pledge allegiance. Line of allegiance tonight.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll remain standing for a moment of silence. May be seated. Well, I'd like to welcome everybody here. Tonight's a big night for us here. I'd like to welcome the family and friends of the new council. And congratulations to the new council and thank you all for being here. I know you're proud of them and I know it was hard work. We have some, we don't have any upcoming events, but I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I generally mention upcoming events and we don't have anything coming before the next meeting in January. But I do want to say, if anybody was here for the tree lighting last week, that was amazing. And I just wanted to mention that Hayden, it was incredible. It was incredible. It was kind of a rainy night and it was still packed. And it was a million things to do in this Parks Department. You're amazing. You do a fantastic job. Also, we had breakfast with Santa on Saturday and that was great. I won't use that word amazing again, but it was, but it was. It was a great time. So, thanks again for all y'all do. And the staff is absolutely amazing. Okay, that brings us to agenda additions and deletions. Do we have any additions or deletions?
Yeah, we have two, sir.
Okay, if you would.
Yeah, item 12A, sir, we'd like to move that. It's 12A. I'd like to move that and make that 7A, sir, so the current council can vote on that. And item, I want to add item 6L as in Larry, Indian Trail Complete Street Right-of-Way acquisitions, parcels 15 and 36 to the consent agenda, sir.
Okay, very good. Can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, all in favor? unanimous. Okay, we have some presentations tonight. We have a new business, Great Scott Collectibles. Come on. I was wondering who you are. Come on up.
So hello, hello, I'm Scott from Great Scott Collectibles. Let's see, where do I begin? Started in 1999, working in the auto industry. Moved to Charlotte here, worked with capital Chrysler Dodge Jeep and Ram up until this year. My business was always something I did on the side. It wasn't a full-time thing, but almost 23 years in the auto industry is enough mentally and physically for anyone that's ever been in that type of industry. So I decided to take the business retail and took over the Bradley Auto Parts building that's on Old Monroe. The town has been absolutely phenomenal with any questions, any comments, concerns. I've gotten responses back immediately. Nothing short of amazing as far as getting everything going, which is hard when you open up a retail location in conjunction with all the online activity that we've had. But I'm very happy to be a part of the town and if anybody needs anything whatsoever as far as donations or promotional stuff, you know, for the fairs or the carnivals or anything that you guys do, we'll be happy to oblige. And we hope to, you know, have everybody come down and say hello.
Thank you for being here tonight. Hold on one second. Hold on, don't run off. Anybody have any questions at all? If not, we have something we would like to give you.
Okay.
We'd like to welcome you to the town, welcome your business here. So if you'll just step right up.
Of course.
Abby's going to take our picture.
Okay.
And here's your plaque from the town.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, next, we've got our audit report. Danelle Bennett with JB Watson and Company, come on up, Danelle.
Thank y'all for having me tonight and thank you for allowing us to do the audit of the town. I know you shouldn't say this if you're an auditor, but we really like working with Indian Trail. You have an amazing staff, as you say. They're always prepared, they're always helpful, and we appreciate their professional manner that they work with us and we appreciate the business. I know you have more interesting things to talk about today than the audit and so I will be as brief as possible. But one of the things I want to point out to you is that we have to do this. You're probably wondering, oh my heavens, she's back already. Has it been a year? We don't want to talk about this dry stuff. But if Bobby will advance the slide, we have to do this. You have to have an audit. It is required by state law. We have to present the audit to you. And as the slide shows you, you select the audit firm and we report to you. It has to be a printed report and back in the day, it was printed and we mailed it to Raleigh and you worried about whether it was going to get to Raleigh on time. Now it's printed and scanned and a PDF goes to Raleigh. But I am required to present it to you. And I know you have a reception and family members and new council members and I hate that I'm going to tie you up tonight, but you are the board who contracted with us to perform this audit. So we wanted to get this report to you tonight. We'll quickly go through this. The auditor's report is also known as the auditor's opinion. We'll go through the financial statements very quickly. There is required communication I have to have with you as the board charged with governing the town. We'll do a one-page financial statement comparison that you received tonight. And then we have to go over the financial performance indicators that LGC added a couple of years ago. And I use a lot of acronyms. LGC is the Local Government Commission, which is part of the State Treasurer's Office. And that is who the audit contract is involved with. It's LGC, you and our audit firm. And then as always, I'll answer questions and I don't mind if you interrupt me as we're going through or you can save until the end. If you'll turn just past your table of contents for those of you who have a copy of the audit report, you will see the independent auditor's report. This just basically is our opinion. We are required, you're required to do financial statements, they're required to have disclosures, and they're required to have our opinion of the financial statements. Our opinion is what we refer to in the industry as a clean opinion, which means we feel that your financial statements are materially correct. As we've talked about in the past, we can't look at every transaction, we can't look at every account, we assess risk and we perform the audit and in our opinion, your financial statements are materially correct. There's other information that the auditor's report includes, the basis for our opinion, your responsibilities, our responsibilities, all of that is in those first three pages. And I don't have a PowerPoint for the next section. This is your management's discussion and analysis. It's a very brief overview. It's comparative. It's provided by management. We just have to make sure it agrees to the audited amounts. And then on the next slide, you'll see your basic financial statements. And I'll just remind you, these are government-wide. They are, the first two are all funds. They include all your assets, all your liabilities. The next three schedules are just your governmental funds, which do not include the stormwater. Exhibit five, which is on probably about page seven, that's just the general fund, shows you budget versus actual. And then exhibit six through eight are the stormwater fund. There's nothing new on these this year. They're very similar to the previous years. And if you don't have any questions about those, we'll move on to the notes to the financial statements. The notes begin on page 11 and they're on the next slide, Bobby. And I've just outlined here for you the pages. The first few pages cover the significant accounting policies. There are no new accounting policies adopted this year by the town. The next, I will point out the new things in the notes. On page 13, if you're flipping through, there were three new funds this year. The Navajo Trail Road Extension Project, Chestnut Square Park Phase Two, and Indian Trail Complete Street Phase Two. And those are described on page 13. If you'll look at the bottom of page 15, I had a town manager once who said, I don't care what's in the audit, I just want to know how much cash we have. So, more importantly is how much of that cash is restricted. So there is detail at the bottom of page 15 that gives you a little bit of information about what your restricted cash is that was back on exhibit one, that very first page. It's for your streets, your escrow deposits, your bonds, and then the unassigned grant proceeds. That's your ARPA money that you've not expended yet. And then the unexpended grant monies are the SCIF and the Department of Commerce grants that you've still got to spend. If we'll move on through the notes, there is one thing I do need to point out on page 20. Note two for almost all local governments in the state of North Carolina is your stewardship note. So it will let you know if you have any amounts over budget, if you have any deficit fund balance, which means you've spent more money than you've taken in, or if you violated any general statutes. That's almost always disclosed in note two. Your note two is on page 20 and the only thing was a deficit fund balance in one of your project funds. And this is because it's an expense reimbursed federal grant project. It's for the Highway 74 multi-use pathway. It's where money was expended and the requisition had to go to DOT and then DOT had to process it and send it to CRTPO and then it had to come to you. So there's this small deficit fund balance. The state understands why that's caused. They know that you'll submit requisitions to cover it. We just have to disclose it here in note two. Your detail notes begin on page 21. This just goes into a little bit more detail on your assets, your liabilities, your pension. I will point out one new thing on page 22. You've not had this deposit on capital assets in the past. That, that new line item on the top of page 22 is for the deposits you've made on the three fire engines. And then the information on your pensions, your state retirement, it begins on page 25 and goes through page 29. Your long-term debt information is on page 31 to 33 and we're flying, I know. So stop me if you have any questions. Page 37 discloses the significant commitments of the town, your encumbrances, your solid waste contract, your law enforcement contract with Union County. And then there is one new note on the, on page 38 for the subsequent event of the purchase of the property across the street from Town Hall, because that was right after year-end. So we felt like it needed to be disclosed. Behind the notes are your required supplementary information. We don't have any choices. This has to be included in your financial statements. This is the actuarial information on your pension. That's on pages 39 and 40. And then page 41 is where you begin the detailed information, the meat of the financial statements. It shows you your budget and actual for every fund of the town. And here again, there were those three new funds this year, the Navajo Trail, Chestnut Square Park Phase Two, and Indian Trail Complete Street Phase Two, and they've, they're added pages for those this year. Behind that is the information on your property taxes. On pages 64, these are, these are the property taxes receivable as of June 30th. Page 65 is the levy for the 2022 levy, shows you your valuation, your rate, your levy, what was uncollected, and your collection percentage. And then behind all of that is your compliance section. And as I've explained to you in the past, they're kind of, they're levels of audits. One is an audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. If you expend more than $100,000 in grant funds, then you have an audit in accordance with government auditing standards. And then if you expend more than that on federal and state funds, you have what's referred to as a single audit. So these are reports on each of those additional tiers of the audit. The first letter is on government auditing standards. We looked at internal controls over your financial reporting and we looked at your compliance with the significant general statute requirements that would affect your financial statements. There were no findings for that. That next letter, beginning on page 69, we also have to look at your federal grants if you expend more than $750,000. The one that you did spend more than that on this year was your ARPA. And so we look at your, your internal controls over that grant and then also your compliance. Did you comply with the specific requirements of the ARPA grant? There weren't any findings on that. The next letter is for your state. If you spend more than $500,000 on a state grant, then we have to audit the internal controls and the compliance with that. That program this year was the Powell bill and there were no findings in that. And these letters are just the reports on our findings, if there are any. And I just want to walk you real fast through page 75, because it's, it looks like a jumbled-up mess, but I want, you go right ahead.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
In regards to the ARPA letter that you have, right, the findings, or?
Sorry, Mike. As the ARPA rules are changing year to year, they're doing, they're doing revision.
Right.
But they're also coming back with different findings based on how fast people are spending the money, because I think we're pushing up on a 2025, 2024 slash 2025 deadline. How does your, how does your review play into that with the changing of the rules? Because one determination you can make this year for fiscal year just ended can be different in the next fiscal year, which is 2324.
Right.
So how are you going to apply that?
Ours, our audit follows the rules that were in place for the fiscal year we're auditing for 2022, 2023.
All right.
And you're correct, the ARPA money has to be, the cost has to be incurred by December 31st, 2024, and then you have to have spent all that money by December 31st, 2026. And so we look at your decisions that you've made based on the rules that existed at June 30th.
Okay.
And then in the next year, those rules will be updated and they'll be revisited.
Thank you, sorry.
No, that's all right. If you will look very quickly on page 75, I just want to roadmap this one page for you because I think it's confusing. There were three reports we just went over. One was on your financial statements and the internal controls over that. One was on the federal awards and one was on the state awards. And so if you'll see those bold points on this page, it will help you, I think it'll help you see what we looked at. It'll also let you know that the major federal program we looked at was ARPA and the major state program was Powell bill. I think it's easier to look at this than to try to read through the accounting verbiage in those reports. And then if you'll just flip to the very last page of the financial statements, this is the grant schedule, the schedule of federal and state expenditures. It lists the grantor agency, the grant numbers. There's a column for your federal dispersments, your state dispersments, and then if you had any local match requirements. You'll see a negative number on that first grant, which that was the Unionville Indian Trail Road and Sardis Road intersection. There was some money that you had transferred from the general fund and the debt service fund into the project fund to cover costs. I think the project came in under budget. So these had been recorded as local expenditures in a previous year, when in fact, you didn't have to put that much local money in. So that local money was returned, that money was returned out of the project fund in, back into your general fund and your debt service capital reserve fund. So it shows up as a negative number on your grant schedule, which looks really weird. You didn't, you didn't make money. It's just, it was money you had set aside and now you get to get it back. So that's that weird amount there. And that's all for the financial statements. If you've got any questions on those, I'll be glad to answer those and if not, we'll keep moving along quickly. Do I sound like a car salesman ad yet? You told me you talk really fast like a car salesman ad. There is a letter in the loose in the back of your financial statement. This is required communication between the audit firm and those of you charged with governance. Our first communication with you is in the engagement letter, when you first engage us to be your audit firm. And then there's more that we have to report to you at the completion of the audit. Did we have any disagreements with management? Did we have any difficulty in completing the audit? Are there things that we want to report to you that aren't to the level of reporting in the financial statement? What were the major adjustments? What are your major estimates? All of that is communicated to you in this letter and that is required by auditing standards. And we didn't have any disagreements or issues. The next thing is this one-page schedule that you got tonight, I think. I've audited local government so long, I remember when these things were comparative and now it's only a single year. And I think you do better to pull out key points and to be able to see two, three, four years and also see how you compare to other municipalities, your size. So we always try to do this one-page thing for you. And Bobby, if you don't mind, advancing one more slide. This is the top half of the paper you got this evening. The first thing we look at is your cash, your total cash, all funds, all activities of the town, restricted, unrestricted. And we've got three years up here for you. The shaded area is how you compare to other municipalities, your size. You used to be grouped by population and I pointed it out to you last year, LGC now groups you by total general fund expenditures. So you are now grouped in the data we get from LGC based on your expenditures. And so you're in this 10 million and above category. That means that you're being compared to Charlotte, Raleigh, Durham, Bald Head Island. I mean, all these places that have a lot of cash on hand for hurricanes or for larger populations. Your population's not that large. So I don't want you to be alarmed when you see 73 million for you and 123 million for the statewide average, because we're not necessarily comparing apples and oranges. I mean, apples to apples. The state has always been like one year behind on this data that they provide you and it's on their website. They're two years behind now. That should be information as of June 30, 22, that you see in the shaded area. It's still June 30, 21, which is what I shared with you last year. That's, that column has not been updated. The state just doesn't have it out there yet. The next section that goes all the way down to that little paragraph that says minimum acceptable level, one of the performance indicators that the state looks at and they require us to go over with you is your general fund balance available as a percentage of your general fund expenditures. And they want your minimum threshold to be 25%, which means in the event of an emergency, you've got enough cash or enough general fund balance available on hand to cover three months expenditures. Your percentage is 114.15%. The statewide average for municipalities you are grouped with by the state is 56.27%. So that's a strong fund balance. The next little blurb there is your property taxes for the last three years, your collection percentage, and how you compare to other municipalities, your size, per the state. The next slide shows you the bottom of the piece of paper you got. And this is just some information on your stormwater fund, your federal state grants, and your long-term debt. And that is for your reading pleasure. The very last thing I have to go over with you is this colorful sheet. We just started this two or three years ago. This is not my design. I don't really want to go over this with you, but I have to. The state tells me I have to. When we submit your audit to the state, we enter information, it's self-reported information off of your audit, out of these financial statements, these books that you have. They're entered into an Excel spreadsheet that LGC created and then this report is, is created by LGC and that's that next, oh, go one more slide if you don't mind, for first time. There is a column there that says unit results. If any unit result column is shaded red, you have to provide a formal response to LGC. None of yours are. You're great. So we're just going to go through these real fast. The first page is about your fund balance available as a percentage of your general fund expenditures. They get really hung up on this. And, and there, this is slightly different. If you're geeky enough like me, you'll realize that percentage is different than the one I just showed you on the other page. This formula that they're using here, they're pulling out your Powell bill money, because that's restrictive for streets. So they don't want to include that in that fund balance available. So it's slightly different, but you're still well above the minimum threshold that the state has for you. The second page and the next slide just asks, did you have a positive change in fund balance for the general fund? Were your revenues more than your expenditures? And did you have a positive fund balance at the end of the year? And the answer to both of those is yes, which is good. For the paper ones you're flipping through, there's a third page and a fourth page that you can totally ignore. The third page is if you offered water and sewer. The fourth page is if you offer electricity to your citizens and you don't. So then we'll go to the next slide, which is page five, if you're looking at the paper one. And I'll go through these very quickly with you. The first one is, was your audit submitted on time? Yes, it was. Was your budgeting of your ad valorem taxes within their threshold? Yes, it was. Do you expect a decrease in your property tax value? No, you do not. Did we report any significant budget violations? We did not. Did we report any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, statutory violations and/or items identified on the TD? The TD is the transmittal document that goes with your audit when we submit everything to the state. It's just, we go through the audit and we answer their questions. You didn't have any of these violations. You were good. The next question, do you have a board-appointed finance officer? Yes, you do. The next question is, was that board-appointed finance officer properly bonded? Yes, he is. There was a requirement this year to increase that bond on your finance officer from 50,000 to 10% of your annual budget, up to a maximum of a million. And you have met that new requirement also. And the very last page, the one you've been waiting for. It asks, were you late in making any of your debt service payments? You were not. The next question relates to entities that provide electricity, which you do not. And the last one, were there any additional issues that your audit firm reported to you as the board? And there are not. So that is a very clean audit, a very fast audit report, and I will answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Well, Danelle, thank you for, and you did a wonderful job and, and you did a very quick job, but I didn't mean to rush you at all.
No, no, no. I know you have more interesting, I mean, like, to have somebody come up here and talk to you about audited financial statements every year, I know that is like your least favorite thing to do.
You did a wonderful job.
There are much more interesting things to do, but we are required to do. Unfortunately, the state found out where audit firms weren't presenting to towns. I've had towns tell me, you can't come present our audit to our board. And so LGC is just adamant about it now that we have to report it to you, which I think is a good idea.
And only one quick last thing I'd like to say is if, we have Jim Wannawatt, who's our finance director. Jim, stand up if you would. Jim, Alicia Massey, and Alicia Gaddy?
Yes.
Alicia Gaddy, if you, if we're, y'all, you're, I know where you are. You're right back there.
They're wonderful and we bother everybody. Like, we bother Hayden and Adam and Carrie. I mean, we, we just, we involve everybody in the audit.
And also our town manager, Mike. All of you guys are a great administrative and financial staff. We got the best. Thank you.
They do a great job.
And thank you for recognizing that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good, and as always, I'm available for questions anytime by email or call if you think of something later on. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to public comments. We have Mr. Joe Mucie. Joe?
I came up, last meeting, I believe, about roosters. I hadn't heard anything back from anybody, so I was calling to see where we're at with that. Has anybody got any questions for me, what we need to do to get it so that we can authorize roosters back in our town? Did anybody have any questions?
Mike?
It was at a public comment meeting, but we've seen, we have not received any direction from council to research it and bring it back. We can talk about roosters, but we'd like to get some correction from council.
I briefly talked to Brandy and Brandy is our planning director and asked her about the rules of roosters. And we need to discuss it and we don't have it on the agenda tonight to discuss it, but we'll discuss it, maybe put it on the agenda next meeting to discuss. Anybody else? Todd?
Did you get, the rules are in the UDO? Is that where they're at?
Yes, and I think Brandy's here. She could give you more specific.
Oh, Brandy, I didn't see you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, but have you, you have the rules?
I don't have them with me personally.
Can you, I mean, because I asked.
But it does state specifically.
They emailed them to me and to find out where they were, so can, can we get, at least getting the rules before we put it on there?
It states specifically, no roosters.
Yeah.
It's very clear. It's an actual separate line.
In the UDO, but it certainly, it has to be so much far behind the house and all this other stuff, so I don't have them in front of me.
Yeah, that, all, I have no problem with the rest of the ordinance, just the fact that there's no roosters.
I mean, I understand the problem. If you've got chickens and you don't have a rooster, you're not going to have chicks, huh, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know.
So if I wanted to breed.
You have eggs without a rooster.
Yeah, if I wanted to breed specific types. If I wanted to breed specific types, say, for show, that takes me out of that loop completely.
Let me ask Brandy, is this... Is this ask roosters that can be in neighborhoods, like, could be your next-door neighbor?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is included in the UDO in the backyard chicken coop section. I do not know of an ordinance in any town that addresses this, that does not have that rooster clause in there, for obvious reasons, especially with our density. You know, you may want to look at maybe allowing it in RSF, but it would not be appropriate in any of the other districts, in our opinion.
And I'm just... I don't know, Joe, as far as I know. I would assume that that'd be the biggest problem. If you lived in a neighborhood and you had lots of neighbors around you, and you had a rooster that crowed everywhere... And I'm not trying to say it's wrong. I'm just saying that I can see people not wanting it.
That's the big misnomer. Roosters have a decibel that they crow at. It's 90 decimals. Okay? If a dog barks, guess what decibel it crows at? 90 decimals. There's no difference. In fact, the Harley-Davidson motorcycle has under decimals. It's a patented sound. So you're going to go on that ordinance, then you can't have motorcycles, I guess, driving at night down city streets because they're just... They're louder than a rooster. Roosters only crow for the same reason that a dog barks, because they're protecting their flock. That's really the only reason they do it, or they're showing their dominance for that. Roosters typically do not crow at night. That's not true. They sleep just like any other animal. But a dog will bark for the same reason. You know, it'll protect... It's there trying to protect whatever's going on in its neighborhood. I have neighbors right now, 4:00 in the morning, every morning, their dog is barking. I don't care. It's what it is. The problem is, is most people are just not used to hearing a rooster. So it's a different noise. That's all it is. But if a motorcycle drives down your street at 4:00 in the morning, you're going to hear it. You're going to notice it. It might wake you up. It's the same thing.
I understand. Thank you. I appreciate you coming. Maybe next meeting, we can discuss it. And I see both sides of the... I see why you want it, but I also understand why it's in there not to have it in a neighborhood. So just, that's my opinion.
Thanks for trying to do the right thing.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, sir.
All in favor? Unanimous. All right. This brings us to recognition of outgoing council member...
No, sir. We have 7A, right?
7A, which is 12A.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I missed the 7A.
Yeah.
Let me go to... Let's see. Where did we pull that from? That's Chestnut Square. Is that Chestnut Square?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chestnut Square Park, Phase 2A.
Hunsinger, right?
Yes. Todd?
We just bid this project. We had to re-advertise because we only had one bid the first time around. We came back, rebid it, changed a couple of things on the line items to make it a little bit more cohesive for the contractors, and then we ended up getting three bids. And so the low bid for this project came in from Rushing Contracting Group Incorporated. I don't have the number from it. A little over 2.5 million. So we're asking the council to approve and award this contract to Rushing Contracting Group Incorporated. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Okay. Is that it, Todd?
Yes, sir.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve award in the construction contract for Chestnut Square Park, Phase 2A project to Rushing Contracting Group, Inc., in the amount of $2,949,296.24.
All in favor? Councilman Gay McIntyre and Buholic in favor. All against? Councilman Barber and Councilman Amber Gert against. It passes 3 to 2. Thank you, Todd.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Now, we come to recognition of outgoing council member Marcus McIntyre. Marcus has been... Six years, Marcus?
Give about, yeah. About a month and a half short, but yes.
Six years on here. Does anybody have any comments? There have to be good comments. You can't say bad... No, I'm just kidding. They're good comments. Crystal?
I'll just say, it's been a pleasure to serve beside you. I feel like you are full of knowledge and have helped kind of guide me as being a new person, our new council member until now. So, you know, it's definitely a huge loss to lose you off our panel, but I have very much appreciated working with you and appreciate everything that you've done.
Thank you. Thank you, Crystal. I'd like to say, Marcus, not only are you my colleague here, you're my friend, and we've known each other for a long time. And Marcus likes to tell a story of how we met, and he's told that story many times of how we met. But he's always telling it about how he met me. I'm going to tell you, I met you the same way because I met you that day. And I was walking around trying to win a council seat, and I walk up on this guy, and he's standing in his neighborhood. And then he was hard on me. He was tough. And I told him that I was really interested in parks, that I would like to see parks. And little did I know, he had three boys, and he was interested in parks also. So we got to know each other, and eventually Marcus decided to run for council, and he did a bang-up job. I think I will miss you. I think council will miss you. I think staff will miss you. There were many times when I, at least first started, and still do stumble up here at times, that you always saw when I started to stumble, and you always took over. And don't think I didn't notice it. So I appreciate you very much for all you've done. I want to thank you for your service to the town, and you've accomplished a lot up here. And again, you'll be missed. And the town has got you a... I hadn't really...
Can I speak to...
Oh, yeah. Sure. Sure. I'm sorry. Has got you a present. We'll let Councilman Barber speak.
Well, you've been here the whole time I have, so there's been a lot of things we've worked on. And, you know, from fire trucks to things we worked on, the water line. So we've been able to do some good things together, and appreciate your public service. And I wish you and your family all the best, and may God bless you, and Merry Christmas, and thank you for your service.
Anybody else?
Can I say a few words, sir?
No, sir. Yes, go ahead.
All right. I know we're going to have closing comments, or I don't know if we will, but I just want to say these things. So if you can see this, I'm putting on reading glasses. When I started, I did not use these, so it kind of just shows how things go. But just, this is directed to all residents of Indian Trail, right? Yeah, Indian Trail residents. As my time in office comes to a close, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to each and every one of you. Serving as your representative has been a privilege, and I am truly honored to have been entrusted with the responsibility of working on your behalf. Together, we faced challenges, celebrated victories, and built a stronger community. Your support and encouragement has been invaluable, and I am proud of what we accomplished together. While my term may be ending, my commitment to our community remains unwavering. I am excited about our commitment to enhancing the infrastructure of our beloved community. I have dedicated my time to ensuring the well-being of every resident. To that end, we've just recently embarked on a transformative initiative to transition some households from well water to the reliability and accessibility of city water. This endeavor is not just about pipes and pumps, but it's about safeguarding the health and prosperity of our community. Access to clean, dependable water is a fundamental right, and this initiative aligns with our vision for a healthier, more resilient future. Simultaneously, we have been investing in the improvement of our road network. Better roads means safer communities, enhanced safety, and increased connectivity. By prioritizing these crucial infrastructural upgrades, the goal has been to elevate our community's quality of life and foster a thriving environment for generations to come. Thank you to all of you who've placed your trust in me and for allowing me to be a part of this incredible journey. I am confident that the spirit of collaboration and progress will continue to thrive in our community. With sincere appreciation, I say thank you.
Marcus?
Yes, sir.
I want to give you a hand. I want to... Town got you something for you to carry on and...
Do I get a picture with you on the front?
If you would like.
I think I deserve that.
Why you show that?
Oh. I don't know what to do. It looks like a cake.
It's not a cake.
Ah, good. Ah, that's nice. Good. Good. It looked like a cake.
We're going to take a quick recess reception, 10 minutes max. There's food down here. And when I say 10 minutes, I mean 10 minutes. So let's get back in a hurry. If somebody wants to grab some Chick-fil-A, we go...
Clarence is in the audience. Clarence, you've got to come up here, Clarence.
Not yet. Not yet. I mean, doesn't he have to do the swearing?
The oath?
Yeah. We're going to bring him up. Okay. Everybody just snack and enjoy. We're going to do the oath of office. And, you know, it's an honor to be here tonight. It's an honor to see this tonight. We've got some great people coming in. Clarence Alsobrooks, Clarence... Where'd you go, Clarence? Right here. Clarence is going to come up and take the oath and join us here. So Trina, are you going to administer the...
Yes, sir. Put your left hand in the aisle. Raise your hand.
All right. Clarence Alsobrooks Jr. do solemnly affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as council member of Indian Trail, so help me God.
Mr. Barber, I think you're up next. Todd?
Mr. Barber, if you'd please recite the oath of office.
I, Todd Barber, do solemnly affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as council member for Indian Trail, so help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Crystal? Come on up.
Right hand in the air. And if you'll please...
You're okay.
Perfect. You can lay it down. I can see. All right. I, Crystal Buholic, do solemnly affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as council member for Indian Trail, so help me God. Thank you.
And I have lots of people here I want to thank tonight that actually worked and supported me. And thank you for the support that you guys gave me. There's a good many of you sitting in here, and I've already... I won't tell each one of it. I love you all for what you did, and thank you so much. Without you, I wouldn't be here. So much appreciated. My son back... This is my son that we confuse the world with. His David Cone also. And this is my grandson. And where's your lovely wife? Oh, I'm sorry. Yo, you're right there, Katie. Anyway, and this is my lovely wife, so... There we go.
Okay.
Put your hand up here with Paul Paul.
Right hand up. Right hand up. Right hand up.
On the left hand up. I'm sorry.
There you go.
Okay. I, David Cone, do solemnly affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and the laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewithin, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as mayor of Indian Trail, so help me God.
Thank you.
And no comments, that is my wife. That is my wife over here. And I feel like we all take a break. Okay, now we come up to appointments. So if someone wants to make a nomination, our first appointment is mayor pro tem. Anybody got a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Dennis Gay for mayor pro tem.
Okay. I have a nomination on the floor, a motion on the floor for Dennis Gay. All in favor? Mr. Alsobrooks, Mr. Gay, Mr. Buholic, all in favor? All against? Okay. Mr. Barber, Mr. Amber Gert. It passes 3 to 2. Mr. Gay, congratulations on being the mayor pro tem.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to swear a hand.
Yeah, you got to come up, Dennis.
I wish to swear a hand.
I had forgotten. Mayor pro tem has to be.
Okay, right hand up.
Right hand up.
Raise your hand.
Yep. All right. I, Dennis Gay, do affirm... I don't have Amber Gert's glasses with me, so...
Dennis, you want to try those and see if they work? Look through the bottom of them.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewithin, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as mayor pro tem for Indian Trail, so help me God. Thank you.
Now I can see again. All right. The next primary delicate for... Let's see, mayor... Okay, I'm sorry. For the crypto. See, Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, the primary delicate. The primary delicate is always or should be the mayor, not always has to be. So do we vote on that? Do we do the Chestnut Square?
Yeah.
We already did that. Okay. All right, so we're now into new business. Consider proposal for Walton and Hall for strategic workshop. Mike?
Congratulations to the new council, and congratulations, Mr. Gay, for your Mayor Pro Tem, and Mr. Ralston Brooks, for your appointment to Centralina and CARPO. I understand you have been a frequent guest of CARPO, so it's, it's, look forward to seeing you at some of those meetings. I have mentioned to the council before, and I come before you tonight with a request that you consider approving a proposal from Walton Hall to do a strategic planning workshop with you. Kurt Walton, who many of you know, was former city manager for the city of Charlotte, has served in the North Carolina Legislature, served his staff to a former Speaker of the House, and served up in the Raleigh area. And he is also associated with the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. You might remember that in 2021, we, when some of you came on board, we did a priority workshop through Centralina where we identified nine priorities, and we've used those priorities over the last few years for everything from project identification and implementation to budgeting. Well, it's time to go back and look at them again and see if there are some new priorities, or do we need to take some off the list, but also to dig deeper into those priorities? And how do we set performance measures to make sure that we're on target? The approach that, Mr. Walton, we've had several discussions about it, the approach that he normally takes, and he does the workshops for Stallants, is that if you approve the proposal, and we're only recommending to approve the primary proposal at $8,000 and not the optional, we hold that off to the side, is he will meet with each of you individually to discuss the issues in the town as you see them. Why did you run for office? What do you hope to accomplish while you're in office? Because everybody runs for a reason, and everybody wants to make the town better. He would also meet with the leadership team, has a group. There might be some individual interviews with Mr. Walton. And once we have gotten that information, then we would schedule two workshops. One, if you look at the proposal, we're proposing to have a Friday workshop from 9:00 until 1:00, assuming that that works with everybody's schedule. And we would not have it at Town Hall, but we would have it a location off-site but close by, where we'd spend, where he would spend three to four to five hours. We would provide lunch to kind of come up with our list, and then we would come back for the final section, which would probably be a three-hour workshop in a week or so after that, just to finalize the list. Excuse me, I have a dry throat. As I mentioned, Stallants has used him for a number of years. They have also, they've worked with a number of other clients. You see that on page eight. One correction to the proposal that I did want to bring to your attention, if you look at the proposal, it says for the workshop of 2024. We're at a position in this town where we can no longer look just one year into the future. We need to be looking five, 10, 15 years down the road. Right now, I'm very pleased that y'all did a five-year capital improvement plan. So what Kurt and I have talked about is to have our priorities or our strategies identified through FY '27, which would be June 30th, 2027. And that will help you not only as you start this coming year's budget, but also two years down the road. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions. And Mr. Walton regrets that he couldn't be here tonight, but he did have another commitment.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for town manager? Okay, Mike, and do we have dates for that already?
Not yet. Once you approve the proposal, then he will, we'll start coordinating the dates. He puts some sample dates in there, but they're not in stone.
Very good.
And the other thing I would add, Mayor, is I would recommend we do it sometime during the week, typically on a Friday.
Got you. Got you. Okay, if we don't have any questions, can I get a motion to approve or deny?
There was no motion on the agenda.
Yeah, there is.
There is now?
Right here.
It's right here. Right here, Todd.
I can make the motion.
There it is, right there.
Yeah, okay, that's okay. They do that to me all the time, I get a different agenda, but that's fine.
The cost of this is?
Eight thousand dollars includes all of their expenses. If we had it offsite and served you lunch and whatever the lunch would be. Sir?
It said plus in the packet.
As I mentioned, that was simply an option. If you wanted to contract with them to come back within October of next year to kind of do a check-in, but again, I would not recommend that you approve that option tonight. You can get into next budget year and then have that discussion.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. I actually make a motion to approve the proposal from Walton and Hall for strategic work plan in the amount of $8,000.
Okay, motion's made to approve. Can I get, all in favor?
All in favor.
I got Mr. Ralston Brooks, Mr. Gay, and Ms. Buholic in favor. Against? Mr. Amburgi and Mr. Barber, against? It passes three to two. Okay, move on. Thank you, Mike. Or do you?
You've got to approve your meeting schedule, then I got two items behind that.
Okay, all right, well, that does come up.
I'm just going to stand.
All right, do you, is the, do you have a schedule?
It's in here.
It's in here? Okay. All right, can I get a motion to approve? Or does anybody want to comment on the schedule?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Mr. Amburgi, you made a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2024 town council meeting schedule as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay.
Okay, ready for the next item?
Ready.
We have Reed Helms with us tonight, and I think everybody in this room knows Reed Helms with the Union County Crime Stoppers. They are requesting a donation of $1,000. Because this is a rather time-sensitive item, we would ask for two things. If you would like to fund this request, one, that we suspend the rules. Typically, we receive the application one meeting and then make the decision at our next meeting. But I think they have a barbecue coming up in January, so we would, if the council would like, we'd go ahead and dispense of this item tonight. Reed may have some comments, but the other thing I'll add is typically, when they do have their barbecue, we reach out and we also provide the employees that would like to participate the opportunity to have barbecue also. We recommend approval. There's $2,000 remaining in the FY budget for outside agencies, and if you approve that, that'll leave us with another $1,000.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Does, Reed, do you want to come up and talk to us about it? Or do you just? Tell us a little bit about what it's about. I realize I might be making a mistake by asking Reed to come up here and talk to us about it, but.
Yesterday, I heard in some development area that some streets y'all take care of. And I guess you got a lot of streets up here you take care of, and some in the parks. There was a street on this side of town that there was a pothole. And it was, it just kept getting bigger and bigger, and it called and called and couldn't get no action. I'm not sure if the man's here or not, but he got so aggravated, he went to a tree farm and bought a tree and set that tree out in a big hole in the street, and the car started automatic going around it. The next day, Indian Trail come out and fixed that pothole. That's pretty good.
Thank you, Reed, for that story. That was good.
That's the true story. It was on TV.
Was it?
I appreciate all your support in the past, and I have my Commissioner Richard Hale, my friend here with me, and he is a big, big help in Crime Stoppers, and we've paid out a lot of rewards, and hopefully we continue it, and we can only do it with your support. And I appreciate Abby, 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 Abby. She helps us. She's there. And we got a big barbecue coming up. We've got the most sponsors we've ever had. If you guys look at your brochures, you'll see a lot of corporate sponsors in there, a lot of, all towns, the little small towns that maybe not can fund the money like the big town of Indian Trail can, but we do have a lot of support. We got WBT Talk Radio coming back live this time, and they're going to be there 14 hours, from 5:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And we got the other two local radio stations coming, and Fox News supposed to be there. So I hope you guys will come out and enjoy it, and we got some political people coming, we got some good music coming, and we're just going to have a big time, make a little money to help keep law enforcement going when they need a tip. We paid. And one of the biggest cases that we've had in a long time, and it was a Thomas lady that was missing, and went for a while and didn't have any information on it, so the board got, had a meeting, said, maybe we could rustle up a tip. We offered 10,000 bucks. But talked with the sheriff, and he said, hold off that, I think we got something. Called me back at 5:30, I think, and he said, we're not going to have to use your money. Good police work, they had three in custody, and you wound up arresting eight people in one homicide. And they're still in jail, I believe, all of them still in jail. But we work good with all the departments, and we appreciate all your support in the past, and come and enjoy it today. Thank you, Mayor, and councilman, glad to have you on board.
Reed, thank you for all your hard work, all you guys do.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
To suspend the rules for donation requests and allow a vote on this item tonight. And then I recommend a motion after we approve it.
Okay, do you want to make a dollar amount? First of all, we'll make, we'll.
Suspend the motion.
All in favor is suspend the rules, okay? Unanimous.
Now we'll approve, approve the donation request to Union County Crime Stoppers in the amount of $1,000.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Reed. Thank you, Mike. That brings us, I believe that brings us to the managers. Did you just do your, oh, no, I'm sorry, Melody, go ahead. Melody's got some, okay, got code of conduct, sorry.
The code of conduct's on your agenda again. This is the third time it's been on, so I'm not going to go over it. If you have any specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them. You got a red line copy, so you could see specifically what changes were made based on the comments at the last meeting, and then a clean copy at your desk as well.
Okay, do we have any questions? If we have no questions, can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the code of contact for the Indian Trail Town Board as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, I'm sorry, Mike, now.
No, you're fine. You're fine. We're just making headway here.
Trying to get it rushed along, I'm sorry.
Please, no, everything's good. Very quickly, I sent you out a note yesterday about essentials for municipal government. I know one of you has already registered. I would encourage the rest of you to register. You see the dates. Sometimes a hotel fills up very quickly. We will cover your travel expenditures, from your meals to your mileage to your hotel, and obviously your registration. We hear from a lot of people who go to those, particularly the live version, is that they get, pick up so much because they meet people from all over the state, that a lot of times, maybe they have been elected official a long time, but they want to do a refresher course, which is always helpful. So take a look at that. Please try to let us know something in the next week or so, where you think you'd be able to go, if you can go. There's also a requirement under state law about having to take a two-hour block of ethics, so we don't want to fall short of that. Again, I want to remind you of the city vision that the League of Municipalities puts on. Last year, it was in Concord. It's their annual conference. That will be April 23rd and 24th, and this year it will be in Winston-Salem. Again, if you can attend, I would encourage you to attend. Again, we pick up all your expenditures, and I guarantee you'll learn something, you'll meet some new friends, and I think you'll find it time well spent. Couple miscellaneous items. We have not forgotten about the water lines at Moores Park. Periodically, I check with the county manager, and they're trying to get a budget to present to their board, so as soon as I know something, we will let you know. Also, if you remember last October, or excuse me, within the last six months, we agreed to help the county by supporting the 74X bus in the amount of $18,000. The latest ridership is, it is up 5.5% in the last year, which is pretty good. I'll guarantee you, we can get it up more if they, you know, as we start to do more promotions and people learn about it. The county is wanting to know if we're interested in working with them in FY '25. I've had some conversations with the county manager's office, and I said I would bring that to you. I'm not looking for a decision tonight, but we would have that as part of our budget process, and my recommendation is that we would fund it somewhat along the same lines, but we have not gotten a requested call, so just keep that in mind. If you have any questions, or you feel like you want more information or a presentation, let me know, and we can take care of that. You might notice that when you came in the building, if you looked at the tax office and if you looked at the planning office, that window sure looked different. And we are in the process of enhancing building security. It is unfortunate that we live in a world where we have to do it, but we've enhanced that glass with bulletproof glass. We will also be bringing some policies to you pertaining to building security and how we deal with the public that comes in, because we want to keep everyone in the building safe, we want to keep our workers safe, and any visitors that we have safe. So look for a policy coming out in January. That's all I've got, and if there's not any questions, Mr. Mayor, I will sit back down.
Thank you. Mike, anybody have any questions? I do want to tell you that I, that we did get something in the mail. I did tell you that. Every, I think everybody in Indian Trail got a bus rider. Anybody in their mailbox say, I did, I got something about riding the bus. So interesting, they're promoting it, too, now. That came from Charlotte or Cats.
And we're going to push that. One of the things that, if you remember when we had a meeting a few months ago, there was a person in the audience, and I know he was at the county, but I think he was here, where he made the statement that he got his master's degree riding that bus, because every morning he could do his homework, and every evening. The other thing is, I don't know if you parked in downtown Charlotte lately, but if you go for a small event, it's like 30 bucks. If you park for the month, it's several hundred dollars, so you can save money by taking the bus.
Okay, moving right along, and very quick, I just want to say, I have parked in Charlotte lately. I parked down there last week, and I see my wife laughing. I went to the convention center to see the Bronco Nogurski Award, Best Defensive College Player in the Country. And I parked downtown, and then when I, and I walked all the way to the end of the convention center. It was like 20 football fields long, but when I came out, I said, you know, I'm going to take a shortcut. And I took a shortcut and made a right right out of there. I walked out of the building, and I couldn't find my car. So I looked for it for about 20 minutes outside, and I couldn't find it. So I decided I better walk back into the convention center and come in and go out the way I came. So I went out the way I came and made, and I found my car. So more to that story is, go out the way you came. say, I did, I got something about riding the bus, so, interesting, they're promoting it too now, that came from Charlotte, or Cats.
And we're gonna push that, one of the things that, if you remember when we had a meeting a few months ago, there was a person in the audience, and I know he was at the county, but I think he was here, where he made the statement that he got his master's degree riding that bus, because every morning, he could do his homework, and every evening. The other thing is, I don't know if you parked in downtown Charlotte lately, but if you go for a small event, it's like 30 bucks, if you park for the month, it's several hundred dollars, so you can save money by taking the bus.
Okay, moving right along, and very quick, I just wanted to say, I have parked in Charlotte lately, I parked down there last week, and I see my wife laughing, I went to the convention center to see the Bronco Nogurski Award, Best Defensive College Player in the Country, and I parked downtown, and then when I, and I walked all the way to the end of the convention center, it was like 20 football fields long, but when I came out, I said, you know, I'm gonna take a shortcut, and I took a shortcut and made a right right out of there, I walked out of the building, and I couldn't find my car. So I looked for it for about 20 minutes outside, and I couldn't find it, so I decided I better walk back into the convention center, and come in, and go out the way I came, so I went out the way I came, and made, and I found my car, so, more to that story is, go out the way you came. All right, that brings us to council comments.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight, congratulations to the folks who were sworn in tonight. I've been going to the meetings for many, many years, and one thing that I remember distinctly was, through all those years, I never heard the term Mayor Pro Tem mentioned. It turned out David Cohen was Mayor Pro Tem, but you never knew it, because Mayor Pro Tem is typically there just to fill in for the mayor, if he can't be there for the meetings. Unfortunately, there's been some abuse of that term, and I'm asking that I not be called that unless I have to carry a meeting home. I'm just a councilperson, just like anybody else, and I just come in here and I try to do the best thing for the people. I want to thank Ms. Cox for our, all the diligent work she did on our ethics policy. Unfortunately, we had to have one, and I think that she has done a pretty comprehensive job of it, and I hope that everyone here will be diligent and obeying it. So, I hope you all are very safe going home, and wish you all great Christmas, thank you.
Councilmember Amburgy.
Again, congratulations to everyone that got sworn in tonight, Merry Christmas to everyone, and God bless y'all.
Councilmember Barber.
First off, I'd like to say, you've heard of Ms. Claus doing the stocking stuffers, is, they were on the news, which is, if you want to Google it, WNCT, which is Channel 9 in Greenville, North Carolina, made the news tonight. I think she delivered over 1,000 stockings to Cherry Point, and I know he stuffed, and some of us up here stuff stockings, I know Rotary and the United Methodist Church and VFW a lot have helped, so, anyway, if you want to Google that, I thought it was pretty interesting, Robin sent me that, so I know a lot of people have helped, and I think a lot of people like to know that that was on the news, if you can look, find it. Congratulations to all that got sworn in, welcome to our new council member, Mr. Russell Brooks, taking the chair of McIntyre down there, and also, I'd like to thank everything for the Crime Stoppers is doing, appreciate what y'all do, thank you very much, and appreciate the good story. Also, I'd like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, a lot of churches in the area have some great programs, special singing, I got, we got the pastor here from Shallow, I understand, and so, the, or did I say Sardis, I'm sorry, you've Sardis? Or, anyway, that's fine, but I don't hear well, maybe I misunderstood what you said, sorry about that. But anyways, a lot of churches in the area got some good programs, I wish everybody Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year, thank you.
Councilmember Russell Brooks?
All right, well, I'll start by saying I'm very nervous, so, but, I like to thank God for the many blessings he's given me, I thank my family for supporting me through this election, and thank you to all the people of Indian Trail that gave me your vote of confidence. Congratulations to those who were sworn in tonight. I ask everyone to be patient with me, as I, you know, up here on this council. Something that everyone, well, something I need to tell everyone is that I'm a very, very introverted person, most people don't believe that, but I am, so, you know, you may have to engage me in conversation, but do know that once I get started, sometimes I don't shut up, so, but, and my wife is shaking her head back there, isn't that something? I campaign on government for the people and by the people, so I look forward to meeting more people, and hearing how we can continue to make Indian Trail a top 15 place to live. I look forward to working with the staff, I look forward to working with everyone on this council, and, oh, I like to suggest that we have name tags, so that, you know, I hear a lot of people say that they miss that hometown feel, from where they came from, they come to Indian Trail, and if we got name tags, and people are coming to meetings, we get to know each other, I look forward to all of that, and Merry Christmas to everyone, so, thank you.
Isn't that a coincidence, Mayor Cohen's an introvert, too?
But I got, I got more than three minutes to talk for the first time in a few years, so I'm happy.
Councilmember Buholic.
All right, well, I want to say congratulations to all of the newly elected or re-elected. I also want to say thank you to our staff, I mean, as you saw at the beginning of the meeting, all we heard was praises of all the hard work that y'all do, so, we really do, y'all make us look very good, so thank you very much for all your hard work. Other than that, just Merry Christmas, everyone, and I will see you next year.
Mayor Cohen.
Well, thank everybody for coming tonight, and especially those who work so hard to help with the campaign, and like I said before, it doesn't go unnoticed. I'm gonna work extra hard for everybody in Indian Trail. Congratulations to all of you guys, Todd, Crystal, and a big congratulations to you, because Clarence, you, you're first, and you are nervous up here, and I can remember when I first sat up here, too, so, the very first time, I had no clue what I was doing, I was very, very, very nervous, but, anyway, thank everybody, and we have so much to be thankful for, we really do. And just very quickly, when you thought the pastor, who did, who did you think was the pastor? If you're thinking, if, if, that's okay, no, that is a good friend of mine, and he is my Sunday school teacher. Randy Fox, and he's a great Sunday school teacher and a great friend, and Gina is a great friend, thank you, and all that, all that did, and the two in the back, Jeff and Nicole, thank you so much for, for what y'all did. But with that being said, I hope everybody has a very, very Merry Christmas, and let's make, work to make Indian Trail the best town anywhere in the state of North Carolina and the United States, and with that being said, may God bless everybody, and can I get a motion to?
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, thank y'all for coming.